We will now call to order the March 13th Town Council Budget Meeting. If you all please rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. On this beautiful Saturday morning, we will start off with public comments. Paula, do we have any written field? No written public comment. For those of you who wish to make public comment, please state your name and address, and keep comments limited to five minutes if you will. Anna.
I can see any hand raised. Oh, Sarah Burns. I'm going to lock.
Okay. Sarah, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Great. Good morning, everybody. This is Sarah Burns, three Hidden Spring Lane. And I wanted to acknowledge what a challenging term it's been for you all, specifically with regards to budgeting. I know that in the midst of creating last year's budget, a pandemic hit, and this year you're continuing to deal with the fallout while trying to craft the budget. So I'm really super appreciative of all the work you're doing, and I know I speak for a lot of people when I say that. I also know that both the town and the schools are asking for a larger increase than you'd hoped for, but I also know that in my perspective, the town and the schools have literally moved mountains this year for Farmington. The Farmington Public Schools have had students in person the entire year. I can't emphasize enough how important this has been for children and for families. This is in contrast with many districts across the nation that haven't even yet opened for in-person learning. I personally have friends whose students, those children, are still learning from home, and many districts, even here in Connecticut, that haven't maintained in-person learning for the full year. So I know the districts spent a lot of unexpected funds to make this happen, and I also know that their requests this year, their operating budget, are to reinstate a lot of what they have to cut and continue to move forward and closer to normal for Farmington families. I also know that the town side is asking for a larger increase than you'd hoped for, but again, I just want to acknowledge the town staff has gone above and beyond in this past year. They've figured out how to maintain town services for residents while working from home. They kept our roads plowed during multiple snowstorms this winter despite changes necessitated by social distancing. The libraries have figured out innovative programming and ways for residents to check out books. Their ingenuity has really been amazing, and they too, I know, have had many surprise costs throughout all this and are trying to move closer to normal with the upcoming year proposed budget. So while I understand that Tyro, we lost with budgeting, it does dismay me to hear that additional cuts may be needed to be made from the budgets that have been proposed. But really, we got some good news this week, I think, in that there are real dollars now coming to Farmington from the federal relief aid. I noticed that the current reported this week that Farmington will receive just over $2.5 million for the schools and for the town for a total of just over $5 million. So I'm hoping you can address today how that money is going to be considered in the municipal budget and whether that might help prevent the need for additional cuts in the proposed budget on both the town and the school side. So thanks for your work and look forward to listening to you talk.
Thanks, Sarah. Anna?
I don't see any other hand raised.
Okay. We have no other public comment. We will move on to item D, considering and taking action on the proposed 2021-2022 budget. And I believe, Kathy, we started with the...
Do we take... Paula, do they need a motion on that?
I should take a motion.
Yep.
Peter?
I make a motion to consider and take action on the proposed 2021-2022 budget. Joe Capitofarell, second.
We have a motion and a second.
So you've gone through all the accounts one time?
Do we want to vote on that, Paula?
I'm sorry.
Take action? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay, Kathy.
Thanks. You've gone through all the accounts, so you did ask the Board of Education to come. They are ready to come down. I thought maybe you would start with them, and when you're finished with them, we'll be watching upstairs, so if you need us, we can come back in, but again, keeping just less people in the room at the same time. And then when we come down, you can ask any questions on the town side, and then I think what we usually do is start to work off the tax and budget worksheet after you guys go through all the different accounts. And the only other thing, if we are finishing up today, we will be approving the warning and the resolution at the end of the meeting, and we have copies of that that we'll go over. So that's where we are.
Okay, thank you. Aside from the ominous "we'll be watching from upstairs," I appreciate it. Okay, great. If we can get the Board of Education in.
Okay, perfect. Thanks. Kathy, you're good.
Alan, are you wearing your St. Patrick's Day pin, do I see?
Yes. I was a Kelly for many years.
I actually don't have on any green. I'm saving up for Wednesday.
I know. This is a big change.
I know. Usually I'm in bright green, but usually we're on St. Patrick's Day, so...
Right, right, yeah.
I think I'm going to be green for St. Patrick's Day because I'm getting my vaccine that day.
Oh, nice.
I got mine on Thursday.
You? I'm surprised they allowed you to get it this early.
I'm old.
So whenever you agree, the stage is yours.
So, did you want me to just... we'll talk about the budget?
Right into it. Absolutely.
So I did want to provide a little bit of context when it comes to the budget and the unique attributes of this particular budget, so bear with me as I go through just setting a bit of a context, so we're all on the same page when it comes to some of the funds we're learning about very recently this week. So in the late stages of developing the budget, we did learn of ESER II. So this is separate from the American Recovery Act, so ESER II funds, which totaled a little over $1 million for Farmington schools. And as we were developing the budget, we did place about $350,000 to $400,000 outside of the budget for ESER II funding, so we did not include it in the budget. And so we reduced our current budget prior to finalizing the budget, you know, around that amount. So these funds were not included in the budget that was presented to the Board and Town Council. We had allocated the funding to ESER II, and we were told by the Connecticut State Department of Education not to supplant funds, but instead to supplement our budget. However, the reductions we made prior to finalizing the budget clearly fit the ESER II criteria for educational recovery. So we felt really comfortable taking those funds, reducing our budget, and not bringing those forward in our operating budget to the Board or to the Town Council. We wanted to ensure that we were focusing ESER II funding on recovery from the pandemic over a two-year period, and that was our approach in the budget development, using ESER II funds to the greatest extent possible for educational recovery. And as highlighted in my budget presentation, we planned to utilize $500,000 in '21-22 from ESER II and $500,000 in '22-23 for the specific priorities outlined in ESER II from the Connecticut State Department of Education through their application and approval process, which requires that the school district fill out a needs assessment specific to the needs of our students due to the pandemic when utilizing these funds. And we must gain approval for our recovery plan using ESER II funds, and what we allocate to the application for ESER II must align to the criteria that we were provided by the Connecticut State Department of Education. So very recently this week, we learned about additional funding coming to Farmington, both on the town side and the Board of Education side, through the American Recovery Act. The American Recovery Act funding is new information we did not have when we were developing our budget. This week, that funding was announced in the media, and we are awaiting more official notification from the Connecticut State Department of Education about our funding level. We all saw the funding levels in the paper, but until we get official notification, we really don't know what the funding level will be. So I want to ensure that the Town Council and the community are aware of the restrictions on ESER II funds that we have received, and we believe there will be restrictions on the American Recovery Act funds as well. And so this is an important context as we discuss further reductions to the '21-22 budget. And I understand that Town Council, you know, we need to reduce the budget, and that need has been communicated this week during our budget deliberation meetings as we presented the budget to Town Council and the community. If we reduce the current budget and place items in ESER II, I do ask for flexibility if, in fact, certain items of our plan are not approved due to the criteria that we must adhere to. So I think, just like the town, there are restrictions on funding. There are restrictions on funding on the Board side, too. It's an application process with a needs assessment that we need to complete. When we go through an application process of any kind, there is always some uncertainty. So I'm just, again, trying to build that context. Once we apply for both ESER II and American Recovery Act funding, our plan can be approved or denied, or parts of it can be approved and other parts can be denied. Here are the buckets that we can apply for when it comes to ESER II funding. Acceleration of learning due to the pandemic, which includes academic supports, learning loss supports, learning acceleration and recovery, family and community connections, school safety like PPE, cleaning supplies, and social emotional well-being of the whole child and our school staff, technology for remote learning, staff development, and addressing the digital divide. Authorized uses of these funds are specific, and although we believe we've identified some areas in this budget for additional reduction that fit these priorities, we may be potentially denied through the application process if the Connecticut State Department of Ed, in the review, believes we are not meeting that criteria. Thus, we ask for your support as we enter the '21-22 budget cycle on July 1, if anything changes from now until then. So we have identified $575,266 within the '21-22 budget to move to ESER II or the American Recovery Act funding, whichever funding is most appropriate, in the areas of academic support, learning loss, learning acceleration and recovery, as well as social emotional well-being of the whole child, and items that ensure we're keeping schools open with health and safety mitigation practices and materials. In addition, we have identified $124,500 of reductions that will be pure reductions and not placed on another funding source. Some of those include teacher turnover due to late retirements that we weren't aware of prior to setting the budget, recent, actually this week, outplacement savings, and facility projects for a total reduction to our operating budget of $699,766. These decisions were difficult to make because they impact the money, the funding that we can use for recovery plans. We will need to keep in mind that a large portion of the items we will move to ESER II or the American Recovery Act from the operating budget will need to be revisited in a future budget, as these items are essential whether we are or we are not facing a pandemic and they are required. Please note that we have been hard at work planning for the recovery from the pandemic as a school district, and that plan will require additional funding due to the large number of students not meeting grade level standards and a larger percentage of students than we've ever had before requiring credit recovery. We also are seeing more risk assessments due to the social and emotional impact of the pandemic on school-aged students. We're not alone in these trends. We're seeing this across Connecticut and across our nation. Just as we did when we faced the pandemic, our planning always reflects excellence, innovative practices, and strategies directly aligned to accelerating learning and supporting the social emotional well-being of our students. As Ellen noted in her introduction, this is an educational crisis that we're facing in the United States as well as here in Connecticut. Learning has an emotional base, and this pandemic has directly impacted our students, and some students more than others, in the areas of academic achievement and social emotional well-being, and we expect the impact to continue beyond the coming year. At the same time, Farmington has provided more instructional time than other school districts because we did not select learning models this year with daily late arrivals or early dismissals each day, and we did not have Remote Learning Day every week, as many school districts chose to do this year and continue to do. We had more in-person learning and learning aligned to our core documents as compared to other school districts, which did create more continuity of learning for our students here in Farmington. We still focused upon the priorities within our program and school development plans during the pandemic this school year so as not to lose ground on the strategic improvement. We really approached this year with resilience and optimism. We engaged in the work in partnership with our outstanding faculty, staff, our dedicated families, and our students, our Board of Education, and our community. Thus, although the impact of the pandemic is significant, we believe we have mitigated against the severity of the impact on our students by providing academic excellence and social emotional supports that mirror what we've done always here in Farmington in previous years. So back to the funding for '21-22. We must use the remaining funds we have within the ESER II to implement, or actually, within American Recovery Act, to implement plans for recovery. So I think ESER II should be looked at as not really the plans for recovery. That will really be the American Recovery Act. We have already identified approximately $1 million outside of the budget to be used in the American Recovery Act to implement a comprehensive and targeted plan for recovery that is student-centered in '21-22 and '22-23. In '21-22, we already had that approximately $400,000 that we didn't put in the budget that was already allocated to ESER II, and then we also are looking at another amount outside of the budget of that $1 million for recovery. So with the reduction that I proposed today, moving operating cost to ESER II, that will leave really no ESER II funding left because we take that amount of over $500,000 and then the $400,000 we already allocated, and we're getting close to that $1 million for ESER II. So we're really going to use any plans for recovery and acceleration in the American Recovery Act. I just think it's important to build that context for all of you, and that would be approximately $1 million in the American Recovery Act at this point. And again, we haven't really had a final, like, an actual official, this is what you're getting for that, but we assume that it would be at least that amount, and we hope will be more because we really want to use it over a two-year period. So again, you know, I really thank all of you for your patience as I go through, you know, building that context, and then I'll just open it up to any questions that you might have.
Great. Thank you, Kathy. And I appreciate the hard work you've done, obviously, because you stated at the front end of this, the budget this year is unusual to begin with, and then seeing these different amounts of money that are coming to us, not all confirmed yet, is absolutely a game changer in how your budget will look. So I appreciate you doing the hard work and figuring out what fits into those boxes of ESER II, and then keeping in mind the future American Recovery Act question. So thank you for all that work. I will open it up to questions from the council now on the operating budget. Ed?
Thank you, Kathy, for your presentation there. I just have a question, more so for the public. I think it's great that you're planning a recovery from this for the school system. I think that's proactive, and I'm glad that you're planning that. Could you talk just a little bit about what that entails, what that will look like?
Sure. So, you know, part of it, the $400,000 that we kind of took out of the budget and lived separately, you know, we already placed in ESER II. Some of those items are certainly Chromebooks. We tried to offset our budget a bit there because that is, as I went over those buckets, that's certainly something that we can use. We're also looking at items like PPE and the shields and things like that because we're going to have to replace all of those in the coming year, and we estimated that would be about $150,000, as it was similar to that this year. I would say that we put $50,000, that's part of what we're going to cut out of the operating budget, in the operating budget, and we put the other $100,000 in ESER. So that is, you know, a large amount of the $400,000 is just the supplies we need to ensure we can stay in person in school. Those layers of mitigation practices are why we've been able to stay in in person all year. So we do anticipate that mask-wearing and social distancing, from what we're hearing from DPH, will continue in '21-22, and when those things are in place, we have to ensure that all those layers of mitigation practices are in place. We are going to be looking at summer programming that is much more robust than we usually provide, so that will include more students and be extended school year, especially the high school level, really preparing some of those students who have credit loss this year, accelerating that over the summer to get credit recovery. We just have more students than we've ever had before. We didn't want to put that in the operating budget because it's an anomaly, and it belongs in ESER, because it's not something we need to do every year. We've never seen this level of students needing credit recovery. We have not seen the level of first graders, second graders not meeting, and throughout the grade levels, not meeting grade level standard. So instead of putting that in the budget for, like, normal summer school, we put that in ESER, too. So there is an opportunity also to put food service funding in there, and I will say this because, you know, we have ChartWells for our food service, and it is a self-sustaining program. Our revenues pay for the cost of personnel, pay for the contract that we have with ChartWells. We just don't have... we did something very creative this year, but we're seeing massive revenue loss in self-sustaining programs like ChartWells, like continuing education, like Excel. So it has been, it's an allowable expense that we recently were notified of, so some funding in food service. We're trying not to hire individuals through ESER or American Recovery because when that's over, you have unemployment then, and we're trying to be, you know, sensitive to future budget years, and so we're going to increase stipends for teachers to do after-school extended-day programming for our students, and even potentially on the weekends. We're going to really look at parent communication and look at enhancing our systems and software for that, science kits that we could send home potentially, rather than, you know, because some students may... we're hearing from the governor that students will continue to potentially have an option for remote. We don't know specifically if it's just for students who have medical conditions, or it will be like this year, which is anyone can choose, but we definitely need more materials for at-home learning, software, reading, training, lots of different training opportunities we can provide. We have an Early Childhood Committee that has several strategies to close the achievement gap by third grade. Those will be implemented, our Ruler Program enhancements, some money for home visits because we know that there'll be a difficulty for some students who have been actually remote for a year to come back and be in person, and that we need some transition teams for a percentage of students. Again, additional Chromebooks. So you'll see that we're taking more Chromebooks out of this operating budget and putting it on recovery, ninth-grade science enhancement, that seems to be an area that needs attention when it comes to recovery from the pandemic, social emotional learning training. We are going to try to accelerate a window project that is, was something that we're actually taking out of the operating budget. It was being done in stages. This is an East Farms window project. We were doing it in stages. We're going to accelerate that through American Recovery. That's something you can do. It's a ventilation, under the umbrella of ventilation, and so it was only $18,000 in this budget that we, because we were just doing one section. We're going to do all sections because we actually have a construction project there this year, so it makes sense to accelerate that project and improve, you know, the ventilation when, you know, opening windows, and, you know, so we're happy that we can accelerate that, and that will not be in a future budget because we'll accelerate it. So those are just some examples of it, but there are many others that, you know, I could give you, but those are some examples.
That's great. It sounds like you have a very thoughtful and robust plan coming ahead for the recovery, so that's great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes.
Good morning. Yes, sorry. Just so I'm clear, on the American Recovery Act, we are not anticipating possibly using any of those funds for this year's budget?
So it depends. Right now, I have $400,000 that I've allocated to ESER, so it makes sense that we would take what we're taking out of the operating budget and put it into ESER, and you know that we have about $1 million, so that gets us close to that $1 million. We also have all of our recovery plans, which is really the intention of these grants, is recovery from the pandemic and ensuring we have adequate supplies next year to stay in person. That's another big theme of American Recovery and ESER II, is the federal government wants students in person. So in order to do that, there are additional costs for mitigation practices, so we feel that our recovery plan for education will then not be able to be covered in ESER II. It will now need to move to the American Recovery Act funding, and we're estimating that at about $1 million for recovery. And that will get, so again, we're also planning for a two-year. So if we're using ESER II and $1 million or so in American Recovery Act, that's $2 million in '22-23, if the amounts are actually what we think they are from media, we, again, if there's uncertainty, I don't know if the state will make adjustments to that, I have no idea, then that would give us another $1.5 million in '22-23.
What's your hesitation to use more of that money, then, of the American Recovery Act?
I never, I will never account on funding until I get official notification from the Connecticut State Department of Education or the governor's office.
Okay, I'm going to just use the hypothetical here.
Okay.
Okay. Today in the Hartford Current, several towns have already got the money already teed up and ready to spend, and the politicians are out there saying it's coming. So what hesitation would you have in not at least start planning on using that money?
Well, I am. I just went over the $3.5 million.
Yeah, I get that, but it just seems, system-wide here, you know, you're going to wait for official... official notification from the state of Connecticut, which you think is going to maybe throw a flying errand or something possibly?
No, no. What I'm saying is, I don't count on what I read in a paper. I have to count on official notification. I'm still planning for that money. And I'm saying that, given the reduction of this budget, both before and after the budget was developed, that would really be the ESER II funds, which is approximately $1 million. And then I'm saying that we are also planning for recovery, given the student achievement data as well as mental health data that we have, to then support our students in the 22, 23 year. And that's approximately a million dollars. And then whatever is left of that funding, I'm looking at 22, 23, which I would think all of you would want me to do that because we'll certainly probably face another challenge, right? When we develop the 22, 23 budget and we want to be thoughtful, you know, not only to our students, but also to the community, our taxpayers, to make sure that we're not spending all of that in one year. That would not, in, you know, my opinion, would probably not be the best approach because we certainly will have additional challenges in 22, 23. They might even be more challenging. You know, we don't know how the economy is going to play out as we progress, you know, through the next few years.
Okay, thanks.
And I appreciate the question and the answer. I think the first portion of that answer, you said earlier on, it is absolutely freeing you up to use all of the ESER money this year where you were looking to phase it in over time. So that was, I think that's a very nice positive. And we appreciate the fact that you're planning for it. But I think as Peter said, yeah, we want to make sure we're ready for that. It seems like you're doing the planning of that. So thank you for that. Other questions?
Thank you, CJ. First off, obviously Cathy, I'd like to say thank you for everything you've done, your administration, the teachers, administrators, custodians, nurses, everybody during the last year. It's been just a challenging time and your efforts have been just very much appreciated. And Alan, the Board of Ed also, everything you guys have done collectively with Cathy, I can't thank you enough for that. Cathy, I'd just like, maybe if you can back me up because I'm writing down a lot of notes. Can you just, this is sort of, can you give me the macro level, what the changes, you know, was it 699 to your operating? Is that, can you just maybe summarize what reductions you made?
Yeah, sure.
I mean, I appreciate all the granularity, but maybe just back out for the publics.
Sure, sure, yeah.
So they remember what you just made and proposed in terms of changes.
I will also just say that I am not the last word on the reductions the Board of Education is. And they will need to vote on this and approve it in the next, you know, their next meeting. So operating budget number that would move to ESER is 575,266. Then there's just an old, you know, a reduction. It's not going to another funding source, and that is 124,500 for a total of 699,766. And that would be the reduction to the operating budget.
Yep. No, that's what I had. I just wanted to make sure.
Yes.
Thanks.
Other questions?
I have one.
Thank you very much and thank you for the info. Can you say emotional supports? Are they considered teachers, parents, tutors, or emotional supports as Chromebooks, paper, you know, all that kind of stuff? Where do you?
So social emotional supports are really focused upon having not only the specialized programs, because we do have specialized programs for students who are experiencing, you know, more significant needs. But we do also have social workers and psychologists at each of our schools. We have a care team that supports all of our schools. And that was, you know, something that was built over time when we started to see more trauma within our students and issues with needing to do more and more risk assessments for our students. So this is something I really would commend the town council and board for supporting those positions over time. And I think, you know, we're well-staffed for normal years, but because of the pandemic, we're seeing a higher number of students that I think, given the right supports, we will not, hopefully will not be long-term. But this has been, you know, really challenging for our students in that we've created some normalcy, but every other part of, you know, the athletics that they used to be involved in after school and the clubs that they were involved in and all of the community organizations that support our students, like all of that went away. And so students had school and then they were at home when they're used to being like scheduled quite a bit. And there's been an impact on that. And just the worry of the pandemic has been difficult, the social isolation. So all of that's been really challenging. So when it comes to, you know, social emotional supports, it definitely would be looking at, you know, additional, you know, additional supports that would help our social workers and psychologists, not ad staff, but maybe contract for the time that we need those additional supports. I talked about like transition teams, trying to go out to homes where students are just, and, you know, that this does happen, where students have school refusal and they're, we have to, you know, slowly get them back into a routine of coming back to school. So all of those things are really important. We really help families with that too, so that students are ready to come back when it comes, you know, August, September, that we are, and this might be very, you know, we might not get that child back full-time for some time, but we really know that there is no substitute for in-person learning. Our students really thrive in in-person learning. And I will say that for some students, remote hasn't created learning loss. For others, it has. And so, and then the social emotional side, I think, are both in-person and remote. It's just been a really challenging time and a lot of, you know, media coverage and all of that that impact our students. So I think we would be looking at additional supports. I will say that every classroom has supports in it. So we have tier one is the classroom teacher. We have two tier two supports, which is what's happening in the classroom isn't enough. Students need more. That's what our social workers, psychologists are meeting with groups of students, helping them. Then there's the most, you know, like intensive support, and that's tier three. And that might be a specialized program or some very, like, significant support to a student who's really in crisis. But the tier one, just so you all know, is we do have, we, all teachers are trained in restorative practices. All teachers are trained in Ruler. And Ruler is out of Yale. And it's a, you probably, if you have any connections still in the school district, students have mood meters that they use and they identify how they're feeling. And if we know that there's some students in the classroom not feeling in a way that, like, if they're feeling depressed or they have anxiety, we're able to address that immediately in the classroom rather than letting it fester over time. So we're very explicit about feelings. And so there's mood meters in every classroom. And there's also classroom charters and things like that. So we've also increased social emotional well-being in classrooms, but it's a very comprehensive approach. But I would say that I really am trying to not hire additional FTE with this funding, only because I think we learned lessons from the recession, you know, 12 years ago or so, 10 or 12 years ago, where, you know, it's really hard to then bring all those positions back on the operating budget. So we're going to try to be really thoughtful about that.
Okay. So like, I think you answered then. So basically, if you see the influx of these issues occur instead of impacting your own staff, you will go to outside resources and use that money in order to bring people in?
And maybe some stipends for our current social workers and psychologists to do some after-school or weekend work with our students. So we'll do a combination of, first, those stipends that I talked about earlier, which don't create an issue with additional FTE. And if we see that there's still more supports needed, we would go out to consultation services.
Okay. Can you just give me a quick breakdown of your guidance councils? Obviously, high school, junior high school, do they stop at junior high? Or do we continue it all the way down five, six, and?
Every, every school has mental health supports in every single school.
You know, the breakdown of teacher or support to student, two to one, five to one?
All of our elementary schools, well, it depends. If you have a specialized program in your school, you have more mental health support because that person is supporting a specialized program specific to social emotional well-being. And so I would say the schools at the elementary, they all have the same level of support for social worker and psychologist. And that has been increased over the years. But at NOAA, they have a specialized program. So they have more mental health support. Westwoods has a specialized program. IAR has one and the high school. So you'll see more mental health support at NOAA, Westwoods, IAR, and FHS because of the specialized program. And then overall, we have the care team who has been really instrumental this year because we've had more absences and leaves from staff, including, you know, our mental health staff. And so they are able to go in and provide additional support to the school, especially if there's, you know, certain students who are in crisis. So even though maybe East Farms doesn't have a specialized program for that, if they have a student who is having difficulty, the care team can come in. The care team would provide that support. Care team also provides a lot of professional development. They do all our restraint and seclusion training.
The care team is within our own faculty or at and outside?
Inside.
Okay. Thank you.
We have a very, I have to say, Laurie, Dr. Singer, Laurie Singer, our special services director, this is her expertise. And so she's really built a very comprehensive mental health, social emotional supports K-12.
Thank you. Again, sorry to put you on the spot.
Oh, no, it's fine.
When you said supports and just wanted to figure it out.
No, and Joe, if I could just also add, it was one of, thank you for your question. This is one of the areas that when we were going over the budget, that the board is just incredible, we were incredibly impressed of because we really didn't have a lot of increases in mental health because our district, really, we are in general ready for these issues. As Kathy was saying, and if you go to our, I don't know if you have our FAQ, but on page 16 and 17, you'll see the listing of all of our specialized programming. And it is a credit to Laurie Singer, our director of special services, that we have a district. We've been able to invest in our behavioral health over the years. And it's really paying off for us right now. So thank you for your question and highlighting all of our programs.
Thank you.
And I'd like to just add on that, because you made a statement earlier that I think bears repeating. You were talking about the FTEs. And for the uninitiated, those are the full-time equivalent positions. And the fact that you are considering not spending these one-time dollars or grants on FTEs, that helps the number that we hear about every year, the fixed costs. If we are adding a salary onto the budget that is paid for this year, eventually that will, it will always roll to that fixed cost unless you cut that teacher or that physician loose once that grant is gone. So I really appreciate you're not trying to use the grants for those positions where they're going to be longer term, because that's just going to make it tougher for whoever's sitting at this table in the future. Because again, those fixed costs are going off. So I appreciate that. Other questions?
Just one comment I wanted to make. I wanted to say thank you very much to you, Cathy, and to the board for your, not only your willingness, but your ability to work with us in managing the very impersonal budget numbers that we have to look at as a council. But I think it's important to note, to your term earlier, the investment that we're making in our schools, because it is that investment in our schools that is adding value to our town and to our homes as homeowners here in town. It's important for us to realize that the fact that we have such quality education and a quality school system, that makes our homes much more desirable than anywhere else. And that's an important value that you're bringing to the town as a school system. Again, not to be impersonal. But I really appreciate the fact that you realize that we are not these soulless entities such as systems and budgets, but we are not just children, we are people, we are citizens. And these are the youth that are going to be taking care of us in the future. And the fact that you are able to better prepare them as whole persons and better prepare them with technology, which has changed since I went to school, and certainly costs more. But as you know, the more we use technology, the more it comes down. So that is, we're kind of in the middle of that wave. But you are preparing them for the 21st century, without doubt, to take care of our country, take care of our town, and to be really, to be vibrant managers of our world. And I really want to thank you for putting that at the real foundation of what you do because that has certainly come through to me.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much. I do want to just clarify for all of you with, I was talking about additional FTE. So the money that we're cutting out of this operating budget will include some FTE because it's hard to achieve, as you know. FTE is the largest portion of our budget and the place where you really have to go when you're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I was really, you know, just to make sure everyone's aware that some of the funding taken off the operating budget will include FTE. But I'm talking about going forward additional FTE. So just a clarification.
Other questions? Okay. Well, I sit in the middle seat, so I get to ask the hard questions. I appreciate what you've done. This is a tremendous cut to the operating budget. If, as the day proceeds, we felt the need to bring you down to that 3%, that would be an additional $200,000 in cuts. Could you just explain what that would look like? And again, I just want to have that so we're prepared when we get to the later part of the day's discussions.
So, you know, we looked into that, you know, it is another large amount of money that would probably, we would have to look at some of the equity items only because they fit ESER. You know, the buckets of ESER are so specific that we really searched the entire budget for things that would fit in those buckets. We don't want to be in a situation, which I think we might be in some areas, I don't know, where, because it wasn't supposed to be funding, that supplants a budget, I think might not fit the ESER bucket. So I just want to be careful about that. So I, you know, it wouldn't mean that we wouldn't do those equity items. It just means that we would probably have to put some of those items on ESER because they fit really well on ESER. Some of them, like family and community and things like that, there's, there's items that we would probably look towards that list. And, but these are also items that will need to come back into the operating budget one day.
Okay. Any other questions? Do you want to address capital at all or is that?
Sure. So we looked at capital through the lens of ESER. Now, this is beyond ESER II. We've already, we've already spent that. So this would go into American Recovery Act, which we don't know as much about, but I would think that it's similar. Maybe, you know, there's more flexibility, I hope. One area would be the technology infrastructure. We would take 150,000 out of that for a total, instead of 550,000, it would be 400,000. Another area is classroom furniture. I don't know if classroom furniture would fit into the American Recovery Act. I just don't know. So I think we would cut it and hope that we could potentially place it there, but I couldn't say for sure it fits the American Recovery Act. And then there's 250,000 out of the union elevator, which we already talked to you about, and 50,000, so that's 200,000. And then out of MEP, 50,000. And then out of MEP, 50,000 reduction, which brings us, you know, to, um, I'd have to, it was, it's around 500,000, right?
How much was it for classroom furniture that you took out?
The what?
Classroom furniture.
Classroom furn, it was 185,000, sorry.
Five thirty-five.
Yeah.
Any questions on the capital?
The cafeteria for Irving Robbins.
So we were, uh, we talked to Kathy about that. So we, we actually met yesterday with Kathy and Joe and others to talk about potentially that the IAR cafeteria and the NOAA Wallace partial roof, uh, would possibly be bonded as a, a question.
Okay.
So those would come off the cash.
Okay. Could, uh, the, the new funding coming up provide money for the Irving, I mean, for Irving Robbins Cafeteria? So we're talking about spacing, students, windows, all that jazz?
Yeah, I really couldn't say because I haven't received anything about, like, what the allowable expenses are for the American Recovery Act. I just haven't, I haven't received that yet. Um, I think that, you know, we're all, all committed to being really creative in, in all that we do. I just don't know if that would be, you know, permitted.
Okay. Is that, because when you said you're placing the windows at East Farms School, that's under that act or the current one?
Well, because it's ventilation, so it, it's on, it's, yeah.
With ventilation, glass doors, all that jazz.
Yeah, because we're, what I'm currently using is, what I know about ESER, I'm assuming they're going to use similar buckets. So that's why I thought the ventilation project would not only benefit our students and faculty and staff at East Farms. We're already doing a construction project there, so that's always good to try to do more. And the other is that it would accelerate the project, complete the project, so that those costs wouldn't come back to the operating budget in the future. But I really couldn't say if, um, the IAR cafeteria addition renovation, I, I just wouldn't, maybe parts of it, I don't know. I really don't know at this point. And I also, you know, just want to be mindful of, um, you know, planning for the next two years and making sure we have adequate funding when we face the 2022, 23 year and not expending all the funding in one year. That would be, you know, important.
Thank you.
Other questions? Uh, I appreciate that. Will you be available if we have further questions before we're done today?
I will.
Thank you very much. We will let you know. We'll, uh, now, thank you for coming in. We'll bring back the town manager, uh, and the finance director and continue our discussion. So I think we'll take a quick break, uh, on the video and cut away for about three minutes. Thank you. Okay, and we're back. Thank you for your patience, everyone. Uh, we now have the town staff back in the room. So I believe Kathy, we're going to start with the tax and budget workshop.
Yeah, if I thought maybe what we could do, if everyone wanted to open their books, you know, to our tax and budget worksheet, we can, uh, put that up and we can see where we are right now. And then I thought after we, let's put that up on the screen. And as you can see, on the education, we have the expenditures, the education, the town, the debt service, the capital improvements, and the BOE defined contribution. Um, I don't think we're going to be making any changes to the debt. I wouldn't encourage any changes to the BOE defined contribution. So we just have the capital improvements, the town, and education. So CJ, what would be your pleasure? I was listening to the meeting upstairs. Uh, oh, and then just to go back, and before we do that, just to show that that is a 4.85% tax increase where you stand today. You all know that, but that's, that's where you are.
Yes, if, so if we put in the numbers that we just got from the Board of Education and make those reductions for the Board of Ed and their capital accordingly.
And, uh...
Can I just get a point clarification on the reductions to the capital for the Board of Ed?
Yeah.
Listening to the meeting, I heard five thirty-five thrown out, and when I add the numbers up, I get five eighty-five.
Okay, let me go down what I've got because I'm, I'm getting five thirty-five also. A reduction in tech of 150, classroom furniture of 185, union elevator 250, and MEP 50.
But what's your base on the, what's the one, Erica? At the border, are you cut the 200,000?
Yeah. Um, Kathy Greeter did say 250 on that elevator, but I believe it was 200 when we spoke yesterday. And so they took 250, she said 250 off the MEP, but it's two lines, Joe, 200 for the elevator that they did, that they mentioned in February, and then an additional 50. So you just said 300 in MEP, and I think it's 250.
Uh, no, 250 for, uh, MEP 50. I'm just saying what their cuts were.
Okay.
They said MEP cuts of 50 and union elevator cut of 250.
Yeah, that's not what I had from yesterday, but we'll double check.
Yeah, so Kathy Greeter is listening in, so maybe she can come down and clarify that.
If it's not a total of 535.
Yeah, we are understanding from meeting with her yesterday, it's 585. So we'll just, we'll get some clarification from her. Uh, Kat, maybe you can talk to her offline?
Yeah.
Great, thank you. All right, and, uh, see, and what was it from the, uh, all right, and operating, you had that, Joe?
You do have the operating, although I'm going to take some license here and I'm going to round it to 700,000 instead of 699,700.
$344, you're just going to throw caution to the wind.
Push comes to shove, I'll already check.
And I'll hold you to that, Joe. Uh, okay.
You're a good public servant.
Okay, so this is what you have now. You have the Board of Ed minus 700,000. So they're now at 3.3%. The town, you haven't done anything. The debt service is the same. Capital improvements, I'm using the five, 535. Um, so now capital improvements is 3.39692,000. See, your bottom line right now is 116,775,530, which gives you a total budget increase of 4.3% and a tax increase of 3.66%.
All right. Kathy, are, was our number wrong from yesterday or your wrong number?
My number was, I, I think I said 250 because in my sheet it was under MEP, but it's 200,000 for the elevator, 50,000 for MEP.
So that would be?
So not 250 and an additional 50. It was 200,000 for the elevator, 50,000 for MEP.
And that's what we talked about yesterday.
And that's what we talked about yesterday, yes.
Yeah. Okay, good.
That's 585.
Yeah.
That's, that was my bigger concern.
Yeah, okay.
Because I said 535, so I left 100,000 out of there.
I left 50,000 out.
Good, thank you.
You'll write a check for that too, Joe?
Yeah. Okay. So, thank you. You're getting your steps in, literally.
Okay, so let's do that over again. Um, again, 700,000 out of their operating budget. Town's the same, debt service is the same, capital improvements, 585,000 dollar reduction. Um, so now your, your budget is 116,725,530. And again, that brings you to a 3.62 tax increase.
Okay. Getting closer? All right, Kat?
So, two things. I've made some, uh, I have some thoughts about the capital. Do you want me to, do you want to go on some reductions on that?
Yes.
Before we do the town side?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, so, once I can find it, if you hold on one second. All right, and if, maybe you could go back to your budget books at the end on the capital, and we'll kind of go through it and talk about some different things.
Purple tab. Brian, any comments on the purple tab?
They're good to go.
All right. So we have some good news. Uh, late last week, we are LoCIP funds, and that's funds that we get from, uh, the state. And some of our ones that are in here, the Skateboard Park is a LoCIP fund, uh, the highway, uh, that's the only one that's a LoCIP fund. We found out last week, we got some notification, and we have about an extra 100, $175,000 in LoCIP funds. So my thought would be, is that the youth center, which is under community and recreation on the last page of the capital, that $25,000, we change that from the general fund to an O, so you would still be doing it, but it would just be funded through grant funds. And my second suggestion would be the Stonehouse renovations, which is one above that, that would be changed from an O, I mean, from a, a general fund to an O. So that is a reduction of $175,000 out of the operating fund, general fund, but it's still being able to be accomplished. So those are two projects that fall under the LoCIP grant, and we just got notification of that there was more funding coming in. So that would be, um, two of my ideas for changing them to Os and reducing up for $175,000.
And, uh, you said something about the skate park?
The skate park is already an O.
It's already an O?
Yeah.
Same funds, the same?
It's the same LoCIP funds. We get LoCIP funds every year, and it, so those are the two funds.
So, uh, I'm sorry, could you clarify? Kathy, does that mean that it, that's funded through that? That the skate park is taken care of through that fund as well?
Yeah.
In addition to the Stonehouse and the youth center?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Kathy, where is that on the capital budget? The skate park?
The skateboard park budget, if you go on, I think it's under edu, I mean, engineering, but let me just check.
I think it's page C.
Three. It's under highway and grounds.
Highway and grounds.
Tungus meet improvement.
Tungus meet improvements. The O right above.
Oh, yeah.
And it says 100,000, and it's an O.
Gotcha.
So I have a few more. Would you like me to go through those?
Absolutely.
Okay. The next one is on highway and grounds, and that is, let me see, get my slow. Uh, highway and grounds, irrigation improvements for $40,000. Uh, you know, again, this is not something, and none of these are things that I would like to get rid of out of the capital, just everyone's clear about that, but I, I know that we have to make some reductions. So that would be one that I would reduce that, I would take it, that out of the budget and defer that a year. So that would be $40,000. The next, the next two items would be in the fire department. And in communication upgrades, we have 125,000, and I would minus $50,000 out of that, so for a total of 75,000. So that would then be 75,000.
And what would that 50,000 be attributable to, Kat?
They would, it's just, it's a, it's a phasing of the plan, so it would then be just, it would take longer to accomplish what they need to accomplish. That would be in the fire communications, it would be a minus $50,000. Um, the next one is in the fire department also, and, um, I'm saying the medic 16 replacement for $100,000. I think that, that vehicle could last a year, another year. We're going to see it again next year, absolutely. I'm hopeful that we're not going to have, um, a lot more problems with it, but it, I think that if we had to push comes to shove, we could probably defer it a year. The next item would be, so that would be minus $100,000 straight from the medic. The next one is the fire station renovations. That is scheduled for 50,000 for startup work to begin with the architect. I cut that back to 20, cut 25 out of it, so it'd be 25,000 instead of 50,000. Again, I think that would get, get everyone started, and we could get it moving. Um, the next item would be in the town manager's account. And that would be in town manager technology improvements. We have $150,000 there. We would, I would reduce it by $25,000, so it becomes 125. And then maybe that's what I have to start with. Um, and maybe Erica or Kat, if you could maybe start on this book right here, and maybe we could just tell the councils, so we're all working off the same numbers, what these new numbers are. And then, so we know what the new numbers are, what, with the board and the town.
Yep.
Okay? All right, so, I don't know, Erica, Kat, or Joe, for the Board of Education, could we go through their new numbers on their column?
Yeah. Yeah, just give us a moment. We didn't do that yet.
And CJ, just, uh, one thing, just while they're getting that information, between the cuts that I just gave you, the reappropriation into, uh, making it the other, so you're not paying it for general fund. When we do the total, I, where my rhyme and reason was, is that I was aiming to get to, um, approximately our policy a little higher. So our policy is 3% of the total budget, and so I was trying to aim for that. So that's where I was on those numbers.
So these numbers we put are, uh, is this the town side or the total?
The total, the town and the board. Yeah, I was just trying to get to that, and we can look at the totals.
Okay, so we can see what the split is also.
Yeah.
Yep, I have that. I think they're all stays.
While the, does anybody have any questions for Kathy on those conclusions we saw?
Okay, either of you ladies, are you ready or still working?
We have the, the Board of Education one ready.
Okay, why don't you read?
I'm ready for everything.
Okay.
Erica, you want to go? Sure. All right, starting at the top, the technology infrastructure for the Board of Ed is 400,000 now. The next change happens on classroom furniture to zero. District-wide mechanical equipment is now 160,000 from 410. And everything else remains the same for the board, if you turn the page. Next change is highway and grounds, irrigation improvements becomes zero from 40,000. Next page in the fire department, communication upgrades is now 75,000 from 125. The medic 16 replacement is now zero. Turning the page to town manager. Oh, fire station renovations, yep, it's 25,000. Town manager technology improvements is now 125, 125,000. And community and recreational services, both of those become zero, and they're, um, moved to the other account, LoCIP funds.
So they're not cut out, but just funded through an O.
So, any questions on those adjustments before we have them put into our budget workshop?
Right, Joe, well, you, maybe Joe would want to put that up on the board while we see ours superintendent?
What's that total on reduction?
For the town?
Yeah.
415,000.
Okay. Anna?
Okay, so, we've now had $1 million even in reduction. Okay, so we've now had $1 million even in reductions to capital improvements. So the capital improvements now would be $3,227,166, which brings your budget to $116,310,530, which now brings your tax increase to 3.22%.
Uh, Joe, can I just make a request?
Could you make that screen a little bit bigger?
I'm eligible for my vaccine. That means I need bigger numbers on the screen.
This is going to block out everything.
That's good, but.
I can read those.
That's how I like it.
Okay, so the total capital right now, what is that number?
Your total capital right now is this number right here. It's $3,227,166.
Okay. And.
What was the bottom line for the MEP? 160. Okay. Does that work?
Again, you're at $116,310,530. It's a 0.9 mil increase or 3.22%?
What was the mil increase?
0.9.
0.9.
Slightly less than 1 mil.
There's a 3.22%.
Yep.
And Joe, how far away are we from that number to 2999?
Let's say I told you you needed 1930. And you have 17. So you're $230,000 away from 29, 2.99.
Yeah, so that was a good question, CJ, so we know kind of where we're at here. I guess one recommendation I could make, as much as I like this program, is the land records re-indexing, which is $30,000. That might help us get a little bit closer to where we're trying to get.
Questions, Kathy?
Um, well, we probably, before we do maybe the second thing, maybe we should talk about the town side of the budget? Is there any changes you would like or any more questions on the town side of the budget? So the town side of the budget right now, if we can see that on the screen, is at a 2.99, or am I? 2.9% increase. We went through it on Thursday. So I'm ready to answer any questions or if you want to make any changes to the town side.
Any comments on Ed's, you've got some land records to do about?
The land records would be the capital side.
Oh.
Right?
Yeah, the capital side.
Yep. I figured.
My mistake. Thank you. Okay, town side, Brian?
Just one question, and that is when the, when the school was here, when they were talking about the funds that are now becoming available to the town of Farmington for COVID. And I know that there were some numbers that we had in our budgets for, you know, for COVID stuff at some point. And I'm sure you've looked at this. I'm just curious to know how those funds that are now becoming available to the town affect our budget.
Well.
And is there a reason for reduction there?
In the year that we're living in right now, we received how much, Joe? $169,000 for COVID funds?
You know, in all total, in the current year, we're going to receive, between the last three months of last year and this year, we've received $193,000 for COVID expenses. And then, as I mentioned the other night, or it was brought up the other night, there's another $2.5 million that apparently is in the stimulus bill that was passed and signed into law last week. That'll be coming in.
Right, and that was what I was curious, how does that, how does that funding affect our budget as a town?
As what Kathy Greeter had talked about, that has just came out, and there really has not been very many guidelines at all about what you could use them, use it for. I will say that obviously the town would spend that grant money on anything we could in the budget versus what we would pay for in our own budget.
Right.
Um, you know, they talked about some infrastructure and some different things. And I had a few thoughts of, you know, I could just pass it on. Like I said, I have no idea what the requirements are yet, so it's hard to do. But one of the things that I know that they've been very interested in is, you know, outside space and recreation and things like that. And one of the things that I thought would be a really good project, and it's not in the budget we're living in right now, other than the skateboard park. But if you remember, our tungus mead plan that we just did, it was one of our goals. I think the dollar amount on the tungus mead total, to upgrade that whole facility, is.
We have $4.5 million allocated throughout the capital improvement plan.
To do tungus mead. And one of the things that we struggle with, with this capital budget in general, is that to meet 4.5, you have to put more than in than $100,000. We were lucky to do the skateboard park because I think that was a desperate need. But I would love to see us put a lump sum of something like that and really upgrade the facility. My thoughts are something like that potentially could be covered on that. I've heard when we talked to Kathy Greeter and some different things, you know, anything that I think has to do with air conditioning systems and things like, you know, things of that nature, air quality.
Yep.
So again, maybe not on the town, my side per se, but on the bigger globally picture with the capital, there may be things like that. So obviously, if we don't have to bond something or spend it, we could then use that money for that. And the one thing Joe and I talked about is that, again, it really, the numbers have just come out. And it's, I know that the press is very hot and heavy about saying how much every town has gotten. But they really, we have no guidelines on what it's actually to be used for. But I know our operating budget for the town council is at the beginning of April. It's a little early. But we would have an opportunity is that if something comes out and there's more clarity about it, and it's glaring that we should do something, you obviously, we would obviously make that recommendation at that time. And that you could change, we could change things up. But I would be very hesitant to use any of that money because we have no idea what we're allowed to use it for.
Okay, so like the, like the school, they saw a couple of opportunities, and they were willing to take that risk and do that to the advantage of the town budget. Are there any opportunities that we might possibly look at?
I don't, I don't, I don't think so, Brian, because our, again, there's a couple of things too, is that on the school side for COVID, there's a, it's, I wouldn't say it's a lot more, but the school got over like a million dollars this year. We got $169,000. So you can see, they, their need for the COVID funds, I think, are inherently greater than on the municipal side.
Right.
On ours, they've said infrastructure, they've said, I think sewer or water.
Water, broadband.
Broadband. And so those were the three topics they talked about for us. We just redid our sewer plant. It's not in this budget. Infrastructure, I have no idea what that actually means. Another thought, which I talked about, which we've talked about as a group, is one of the things, again, that is a big ticket item that we're going to eventually have to fund, is that our rails to trails are going to need to be repaved. And again, thinking about outdoor activity and things of that nature. I'm thinking possibly that would be in infrastructure, maybe. But I don't know. So again, it's not in this budget, but it's in the planning document that, you know, I think, I forgot if we have that even in there, but it's millions of dollars to, you know, redo the rails to trails. So again, water and sewer, broadband and infrastructure. I'd hate to take something out of here because I have no idea what that actually means.
Right. Was there some bridge repair?
There's bridge repair, yep.
Would that fly possible?
Potentially, potentially.
But that is something that we might be able to take out of the budget.
Exactly.
Is that something that we have to do because it's falling apart? Or is that something that might possibly be deferred and with the hopeful potential that it might actually get paid for by these funds?
I mean, again, I don't, I don't really, we like to, our bridges, there's, we always like to have money in the account because we get inspections and then we are required to do things on the bridges. And so, again, potentially, that could be something. I just don't particularly care. It wouldn't be my recommendation just because it's bridge repairs. And I would hate to have to be running around looking for money to do bridge repairs. And if we didn't, if the funds didn't come in late, if they came in later, I don't know when they're coming in. It's just, to me, it's, if an emergency bridge repair comes, I want to have money and I want to do it. And so that's kind of my thought process on it.
I would love to do that too, absolutely. I'm just looking for all opportunities, so.
I, I hear what you're saying.
I just see that as something that might be a potential opportunity.
Sure. It absolutely could. It absolutely could.
Brian, good question. I mean, it's, we obviously, that's.
It's hard to ask those questions and figure out what we're looking at and how we're going forward. One of the nice things, I know on both the school side and the town side, they're looking forward to getting clarity on this money and figuring out what it can be spent on. And I think from the board's side, the big advantage here was not that the board is saying, oh, we're going to get this money, let's spend it ahead of time. They're now saying this other piece of money, the S2 money, that we were going to spend over two years. We now feel much more comfortable spending it in the first year because we're comfortable knowing there is more money coming in. And the assumption is just what they're allowed to use it on. So I think that's the difference between the town side and the board's side. There were dollars available, but rather than spreading it out over time, they're going to focus it on this year, knowing there's more money coming out. But, you know, good question because it seems like both sides are doing a great job of figuring out when we get clarity. I think we've already got a list of things that we're hoping to use it on.
Right, so that's one, just looking at, what are the opportunities for us to discuss?
Absolutely. Good. Other questions for Kathy on the operating side and the reduction?
Ed? Yeah, just a quick question for you, Kathy. One of the things the racially equality task force recommended to the town council was that the town hire an equity and inclusion consultant. And I just want to make sure that, is that in our operating budget currently?
Yeah, that's in our, in our training and personnel. We have money slotted away for that. We have already reached out to Canton, who seems like they have an interest in it. We, what we would like to do is work with our regional towns and hire someone for all of us, a consultant. So that is definitely, I, my understanding is it's on the action plan as a priority one, and it is in the budget to help fund, to fund that. Hopefully, our portion of it, if we were funding it with the thought of that it would be our portion of it. But we know, I know it's a priority, so we'll, we're going to try to, we're going to make it work.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay.
Good question, Ed. I mean, we have been looking through the town budget and the Board of Education budget to really fully fund all those requests. So I think we've done a good job with that thus far. We're not done with the day yet.
Right. This is a question for Joe, which we just talked about earlier. And my question was something that came up last year, which was the additional payment of an extra week that the town sees once every four years because of a leap year payment. Certainly for hourly workers, but for salaried workers, they, you had mentioned that they actually get an extra week's pay for that.
And just to be clear, Brian, it's once every 11 years.
Oh, 11 years, sorry. I just thought it was every leap year.
No.
Oh, that's even better.
Yeah.
But in our discussion, you said that it was possible to kind of like spread that out over like a couple of years. Or my, my question is, it got moved from last year to this year. You said there might be the potential to move it to next year. So I just wanted to say two, a couple of things. One, is that something that we should be looking at to help balance this budget? Is that something we should certainly as a town council, address at some point to see how we can, you know, properly disperse that thing so that future councils don't get hit with this thing every 11 years? Not that that's going to affect us, maybe it will, God willing. But that's my question.
Okay.
On that particular item.
Yeah. First of all, it's every 12 years.
12.
So we'll start there.
I should have asked you first.
Yeah. We deal with it on the 11th.
And basically, what happened was we had the choice of, on this payroll, we could have actually done it in the year we're living in right now. And we budgeted for it last year, and then we took it out based on, you know, the needs last year that came up after the pandemic hit. And we both basically postponed it to next year. Funding, as Kathy mentioned on Wednesday night, is in the budget for that payroll for next year. It's approximately $183,000 for next year. And we will, and obviously, we'll pay it out next year. In the future, there are some things you can do to try to get rid of it. But basically, what it means is you're going to have to pay, starting in, not next year, but the year after, you're basically going to have to add one additional payday until you get to, you would have to basically pay on a, you would have to split your year on the date that the year ends. We don't do that now. So we would basically have to add one day over the next cycle, next 12-year cycle. And then at the end, we would not have that extra pay period. But it's basically, you're going to, you know, over the next 12 years, you're going to add one day each year to your pay, to your salaries, to offset that.
Okay, so it's possible to, what I want to do is just level the things so that future councils don't get that spike that we got hit with.
Yeah, and, you know, and just, and, you know, on a calendar year basis, and anybody here who's paid on a biweekly basis or every, you would realize last year you actually got 27 pays. So this isn't something unique to us or to the town of Farm, to the town of Farmington.
True.
It's basically something that occurs everywhere. And most people who get paid biweekly, or even on a weekly basis, on a calendar year, you actually got an extra pay last year. So when you do your taxes, if you say, gee, I made more money, and I don't know why, it's probably why.
Right, and I'm not trying to take anything away from anyone. I just want to see if it's possible to move it, as we discussed. Do we want to consider doing that? Again, not trying to take anything away from anybody.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, we'll look into it. And but it's just a matter of, again, we'll just have to build towards it.
Right, exactly. It's a, it's a change that we can worry about down the road. How do we deal with this particular budget today? Is that's what we're focused on? And do we want to defer that, which you said is a possibility?
Well, we did defer it till next year. We can't defer it beyond next year.
Joe, could I just jump in on that? And Brian, to your point, I think if this were a policy decision we want to make as a town, that will not affect this year's budget.
Right.
Right.
You need to pay that 183 this year.
Oh, we do have to do it this year?
We'd have to.
No, no, we have to do it next year.
We have to do it next year, yeah.
But that's in this.
The budget we're talking about, in this budget.
Right.
Oh, it's not in this budget?
It isn't.
Oh, it isn't this budget, or next year?
This budget coming up.
For '21 to '22 budget. If we were to change policy in '22 to '23, we'd have to take that eight-day week, one of them every year, for the next 12 years. So in 12 years, whoever is sitting on this council, and I'll make a broad assumption, it will be none of us in 12 years, that they will then not face this. So I think that's a discussion beyond this budget.
Right, yeah.
Appreciate you bringing it up. I think we're going to talk about that after this budget if we want to make a wide-range policy change. And then we can talk about the pros and cons. But for this budget, we will be putting in that 183 because.
Oh, okay, all right.
That's, we don't have the money anywhere else.
I meant the next year. I thought you meant the next budget.
Otherwise, you can call the people and say they're getting one less check now.
Just kidding.
And, and just, just to, again, and I don't want to beat this, but just to be clear that it's, it's not as simple as it sounds. Because if it was as simple as it sounds, we would have done it. And the problem is, is that our systems are all set up in a certain way. And also, our union contracts are set up all the way. And our union contracts are specific that we have to pay bi-weekly or weekly. And so there's a lot of, it's not just something as simple as just rolling this out.
Oh, absolutely.
I just want to make, when you said, you know, we, that 12 years you won't have to deal with it. We would be hopeful that that's the case. But I, you know, I don't know, again, we have contract negotiations. We have how we pay people. These are all very, not very simple issues to undertake. So I just wanted to be clear that, again, it's not just something that we just go and it's done tomorrow.
No, it's not. No, I agree with that.
Okay.
But what I'm saying is, how do we smooth it out?
Yeah.
So that we, as Joe said, that's a possibility.
Right.
Anyway, I just, we're talking about this budget. That's what I want to focus on.
Other questions on Ed?
Yeah, I guess just one more question on that. So, I mean, so it sounds like we're contractually obligated to pay biweekly for the unions. But if you just divide the salary by 27 as opposed to 26, aren't you still meeting that contractual obligation?
I think, again, it's not as simple as that. But again, we have different people. Some of it, we pay right up to the day, some of it by how many pay periods we have, and you're biweekly. So I think you're right on some of that. But again, it's something that we just haven't, we haven't researched about how to do it and how to change it up. And so, again, I think that what I'm getting and what we've talked about internally is that we should be aiming to look to see how we can do it. Because if it's possible, and we can work for the next 12 years, that would behoove all of us to do that.
Okay, fair enough.
Behoove somebody. All of us. Okay, other questions for the operating? Can I go back to capital for a second?
Sure.
Well, do you want, are there any, are there any other questions on the operating side? Okay, Kathy, did you have something to say?
Nope. So, operating, okay, so.
I think we sound good on town's operating.
Okay. Capital, sure.
Just a suggestion on the fire side of it.
Yep.
If you cut the Knox boxes in the fire renovations, you keep the replacement truck in there. And the reason I say that, granted, it's not a full, it's not as much of a cut, but then this truck will, by the time they order it, we'll say, if we, next year's budget, then they order, it's another year out. So it's another year potentially older. So now we're sitting here, so it's almost two years older. And if they're having troubles with it now, it's just going to be another Band-Aid fixed for the next two years. So that's just one suggestion I'm making.
I guess my, my comment back would be on that, is that if there are further reductions, what I'm hearing from you is that you would potentially like to keep the medic in the budget.
Yeah, and then reduce the Knox boxes and fire station renovations, because fire station renovations, I don't know how far you're into it, based on COVID and all that stuff, but I just don't know where you're at in the process right now, literally.
Yeah. Yep, the fire station renovations hasn't started. That's one of your goals, to maybe get a committee coming up maybe after the summer and once we get through the high school. What I would suggest is that, if that's something that, if there's an interest, if there are, if there's additional cuts that you want to make from the capital, I do have a list, and maybe I could start moving things around, because I'm not that crazy about giving up the Knox boxes. But I understand what you're saying, and we do have a list. So maybe we could make another, give another suggestion to you.
They have plenty of axes and Halligan bars to get through them.
Yeah, exactly.
Then we have to add the rebuilding budget for one.
That falls under insurance.
Yeah.
All right, other question?
Just to Kathy, you mentioned suggestions. I mean, what would be some of those? Do you have them prioritized or tiered or anything like that, or?
I do. I mean, again, I think that, I don't like any of these capitals that we talked about.
Kathy, it's safe to assume we don't like any.
Any of them.
Speaking for Kathy Greeter, too, so.
These are more difficult. And just let me hold on, hold on one second. So some of the thoughts that we had were, unfortunately, I really like the program, but the land records re-indexing, the supervisors SUV in the police department, and town hall improvements, reducing that by 25 more thousand dollars.
How much was the supervisor SUV?
$70,000. That gets us behind, I really, I mean, it depends on how far you want to go down with the capital. And the tool cat, which again, is, would not really be what I would like. I guess the first priority, the two under, would be probably at the top, would be reducing the town hall improvements by 25,000, and doing the land records re-indexing for $30,000. Those would probably be the two. Again, I have the SUV in the fire, police department, as a higher priority than the medic in the fire department. But maybe I could look at, again, maybe this Knox box, and, you know, again, the fire station renovations. If you guys, maybe we wanted to, we could still get the committee going, and if we needed some startup cost for that, we could deal with it as we go on, or something along those lines. I mean, I think CJ, what my suggestion would be to go back to your original chart and see where, what number you want to get to. And, you know, again, the priority with, you know, with the capital was to go to the 3%, closer to the 3%, the 2.5. I think I'm lower than that now with what I've mentioned.
With which one, you're talking about putting in the land records and renovation statement to their amount?
Yeah.
Which would be around 55, so over 195, we'd still need.
Right.
Joe can put that on there.
What was that?
It should be 195, we still need to cut.
Yeah. What ones did you just, I didn't hear which ones that you were interested in.
That would be if you took out land records and town hall renovations.
Okay.
I think we were at 230, Joe, is that correct?
Yeah, you need a 230.
So 230 less 55?
Yep.
Yep, thank you.
CJ, just clarification. For the town hall, were you saying take out the whole thing, or take out a portion of it?
Twenty-five.
I'm sorry?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay.
And the 30 on the land records. I'm not going to look at Paul when I say that.
CJ, I got one question for you?
Yeah.
Again. My question is, I see that on the town side, we've already made reductions in technology improvements, which I appreciate that we've done. But I'm wondering if that is possibly part of the, the infrastructure that might get repaid? Is that something that is a possibility? I know you can't really speak to that because you don't know the guidelines.
Again, infrastructure in my world doesn't usually mean technology to an extent. I mean, it is infrastructure, so possibly it could mean infrastructure. I personally think of when they talk about town's infrastructure, I think more of the roads, the things of that nature. But that said, technology is infrastructure. So, but it's, to me, I don't really, in my mind, consider it like that.
Right. So my question is, I, obviously, I want it there.
Yeah.
But if we're trying to come close to making certain numbers, do we want to reduce it rather than 10, 15%? Do we want to make, and with the chance that it might possibly be reimbursed, or paid for?
Right. Right. And maybe CJ, if what I could suggest is that you put the tax and worksheet up again, and you know what number you want to reach. And then we can prioritize on the town side. I can tell you to get there instead of having just different ones, okay?
Let's take a short break. Joe, if you can put that up, and when we come back, we'll take about a five-minute break.
Okay.
Okay, and we're back. Thank you. All right, where we left off. Joe, could you put the numbers back on the chart and see where we're at right now? Chart back on the screen.
Okay, so you just made two additional reductions to the capital budget. Now you're at $3,172,166.
Excuse me, Joe, can you blow that up again for me?
Thank you, Joe, for asking that.
No, you're going the wrong way. Thank you. Okay, so now you're at $3,172,166. Your bottom line is 116,255,530, which brings you to 3.16% tax increase.
And how far is that from the 299?
Yeah, you need, right now, you need $175,000.
And, Joe, could you remind us all, especially me, though, does that include the medic truck in there, or without the medic?
That's with the medic truck in there.
That is with the medic truck in, including it back into the budget?
No, no, that's with it out of the budget.
That is with it out of the budget.
That's with the truck out?
Yes.
That's with the medic truck out.
Oh.
And the medic truck's on the budget. Okay, so we're 178, five off. We still do not have the medic truck, and we have the Knox boxes and the
The Knox box is still in there.
Okay, gotcha.
It's still in the budget.
All right, thank you. All right, we've gone over a number of things on the town side and the town capital. If I could make a request of the superintendent of schools, while she's here, I appreciate your being back here, Kathy. If we're looking for any additional cuts from the board of Ed's side, would that be something we would be better placed to take out of operating, or capital?
Capital.
And if we're looking at, right now, we're looking at 200 out of capital, what would that look like from the board of Ed's side?
So I could, looking at the school security, we would reduce it from 100,000 to 75,000. So that would be a $25,000 decrease. Code and safety, it's currently a 100,000 there, so we would cut by 40,000 to make it 60,000. We would defer, you know, the telephone is, is really, we're saving up. So that would defer us for one year, replacing telephones, and that's in an out year. So bringing the telephones to zero.
And what was that number originally?
It's 25,000.
Twenty-five, yeah.
Reducing the FHS mascot. These, this really has nothing to do with the building, because it has to do with athletic fields and making changes there with the imagery that we have on some of our, you know, in some areas on our fields and our scoreboards. And so I would reduce that by 5,000. So now it's 20,000. And then we would defer the vehicle replacement, and that would be 91,000. So I don't think I, I'm close to 200,000, but
The vehicle was 95, Kathy?
Oh, it's 95. So I'm even closer, thank you.
91?
95,000 for the vehicle.
Ninety-five, yeah.
190, CJ.
That's pretty normal. Any questions on those intentions from the Ed?
Yeah, so it makes me a little bit nervous with these additional cuts here, because I know they've already cut by 585,000. They've brought their operating budget down.
Just about, yeah?
Yeah, no, I'm just talking about what they've done in general. But, yeah, on the capital side, they've, they've reduced already by 585,000. Last year, we had a very tight capital budget for them. And we did, at the beginning of this budget process, talk about, you know, catch up and rebuilding on capital. And also, some of the measures, some of the items that the superintendent just mentioned were on security, which that always makes me a little bit nervous when we're reducing security, because that safety's also, always a top priority for me. So I'm a little bit uncomfortable with the, kind of, doing a full $200,000 additional cut from the board of Ed at this time, maybe look a little bit more on the town side or somewhere else, if we can find another way to get down to the, the number that we're looking for.
Thank you. Brian?
Just one question on, you had mentioned taking out 40,000 from code and safety. I'm questioning the code side, because the code side, I mean, that means, you know, us making code, correct? And that affects our accreditation, which is, you know, kind of challenged right now as it is. So that would be actually probably more dangerous to our accreditation, which we don't really want to affect any more than it has been, because so much stuff has been kicked down the road for years. So I'm thinking code is something we certainly do not want to cut.
Yes, I, this would have to do with some potentially, really, we had a Noah Wallace exterior lighting. We'd have to do part of that, but not all of it. You know, just deferring, you know, deferring it for one year. This, we did do a comprehensive parking lot lighting project, which was a collaborative project between the town and the board. This is a part of the, if you know Noah Wallace, it's the stairs going up to the second-tier parking lot, and it's completely dark. And so it has, you know, a safety issue when it starts to get dark out, that people, you know, could trip or fall. So we want to just address that. But we would probably prioritize what part of it we would address first in that case.
Okay, just, I have concerns about code, addressing code.
Yeah.
For accreditation reasons.
Yeah, it wouldn't have to do with the high school.
Oh, okay.
So that
All right.
Yes, yeah.
Great.
Can I ask one thing? You would put lighting on the playground portion where they use parking randomly, on that part of the playground?
They use
Where they park when they have events and stuff?
Yeah, they park, well, first of all, there's a lot of going up and, you know, that's used by the community in the evening because of the playscape.
Yeah, well, I live right next door.
Yeah, so you know. So those stairs are familiar to you. They just weren't part, it wasn't part of the, the parking lot project. And so, you know, we, we really prioritize the lower parking lot in that project. So it would be addressing, you know, that area where you're walking up the stairs, and then that area within, you know, the playscape.
Yeah, so going up the stairs.
Yep.
And then you would hit the
Second tier.
And then you would put more additional lighting going towards Church Street, or
It's really that place.
Or on the backside to the hill where the kids light?
I think it's more the stairs.
Yeah, just
And that immediate area there.
Okay, so that landing area will
Yeah, so that's why it does meet school code and safety compliant.
All right, but not the park, the playground areas, I'll call it.
I don't believe it. And I think it's just really for
Okay.
People walking in that area.
All right, all right, thank you.
Good morning, Kathy. Cafeteria equipment, is that something that could be pushed off a little bit? I hate to see it taken away from security.
I believe that's a bond.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem, no problem. Brian, am I correct with that?
What, no, the cafeteria equipment is 91,000, right? And, I believe, yeah. And that isn't something we could defer, because there, and we have a, now we put a plan together to replace cafeteria equipment. It's aging, and we, we won't be able to get through another year without replacing the equipment in that particular line.
Thank you.
Joe, since you brought it up, what are you talking about for security? Are these things projects that in the future, or is something that needs to be addressed yesterday?
The school security items. So that typically is through our lockdowns drills and working with the police department. They will give us, you know, there's some things that we're doing as part of our security review recommendations, like bollards in areas that have risk of cars and pedestrians being together. So bollards are something that we're working on right now. But also, that 100,000, we address as lockdowns occur, and we find issues with various security items. And the police give us those recommendations, then we address them in real time.
Right. So obviously, as a part of it, so we're talking about door locks, we're talking about what, windows?
Windows.
Is it windows or window coverings?
Sometimes PA systems in certain areas where, you know, we're outside a little more. And so if there's a lockdown, we want to make sure faculty, staff, and students outside hear that lockdown just as clearly as inside. So sometimes we'll have recommendations from the police department, like your PA system needs to extend further, they're not hearing it. So it really is in real time, addressing issues in each one of our schools that are related to security after, after those drills. So it's a combination of implementing our plan and those real-time issues that we experience, like on a monthly basis, you know, really related to school security directly.
Okay. All right. Listening to the list you had, and I appreciate you giving us those, we certainly, we've heard a couple of questions on particular security and code. The vehicle, as we do quite often on the council and the town side, generally, a vehicle being put off for a year is not a critical issue. I assume this is a, it's still a working vehicle, it's just near the end of its life. So that 95 shouldn't be a big issue. As you were mentioning with the FHS mascot, reducing that by 5,000 shouldn't be any big issue, because that's, you've already got still money in the, in that account. So those should be two easy ones for 100,000. My only other question is, the telephone, is that a banking account, or is that?
It's banking.
It's banking right now. So potentially, that 25. But 100 should be an easy, you know, these are things we're just putting off, basically, a vehicle one year, and possibly the telephone. Okay, that's good. Any other questions on that side?
Yeah, because I was just questioning, to Joe's point, security overall for the schools, kind of concerned about, you know, taking away from security.
Brian, Brian, we just, we're not going to take away from security, we're not going to take away from code.
Okay.
We're going to keep those in there, they're going to be as they stand.
Oh, okay, great.
Yeah. The only thing we're talking about right now is the vehicle, the mascot, and potentially the referral on the 25 for
Phone.
The phone system, which is a banking account right now. So, okay. Any questions on those two items, if anyone uncomfortable with that? Okay, great. Thank you, Kathy. All right. On the overall picture, is there anything else we should add, Kathy, on the town side, or?
What?
Joe, can you put that up, taking out those, those numbers? Joe, can you put that up, taking out those, those numbers?
So a hundred and twenty-five thousand, Joe? Yeah.
Okay, so now, capital is now three million, forty-seven thousand, one sixty-six. Your budget, bottom line is one hundred and sixteen-nine, one hundred and thirty thousand, five thirty. And you're at a three, slightly above a three percent tax increase, three point oh four percent.
Okay, again, what's the difference between that and all right, two nine nine?
So you're, you're fifty thousand dollars away.
You're fifty thousand dollars away, and that still doesn't have the, the truck. Peter, you had some comments on the truck in general, you felt the fire truck is fairly important for the medic team?
Yeah, I just was, like I explained to you, or my explanation would be the knock boxes and the fire sanction renovations, which would be seventy-two thousand, but we're still, we're still up by twenty-five, yeah.
Okay, and just the truck, just adding back in the truck, if you kept the knock boxes and we, because that seemed to be, to Steve, he felt pretty strongly about the knock boxes.
And it's, it's, Peter, and Peter would know better than I would on that, off the top of my head, I mean, again, it's, it's a new item, I guess they're, they're a new item on our budget, I could potentially wait a year. I think it probably could.
All right, well, I'm not, I'm not trying to.
Yeah.
Step on anyone.
Right, no, 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 no. And for a fair point, Peter, when I was talking to Joe at, at break, and Joe, you know, again, looked after your guys' council with the medic and ran some of the bills and things like that for, you know, recently. And he did say to me during the break that the fire truck is breaking, it breaks down quite a bit, it's an expensive piece of apparatus. Does that not mean it wouldn't make it through the year? Probably not, but would we be spending a lot on maintenance of it? It needs, it's obviously on the budget, on the capital because it needs to be replaced, you know, but, so I, I appreciate your point. If you would like, we could maybe just take a quick look at some of the other capital to see if we could do that, maybe take a five-minute break? Okay, all right.
Okay, we're back. All right, right now, we are, we were fifty, if we're adding in the medic truck, there seems to be pretty strong feelings about bringing that in. We're a hundred and fifty off. Kathy, is there anywhere else we can be looking to get closer to that number? We need a hundred and fifty.
Well, the one thing Joe and I were talking about again, and I think there's maybe some potential for some debt savings, so why don't I turn it over to Joe and see if maybe we can get some savings out of the debt? And Joe, why don't you speak to that?
Okay. I mentioned the other day that a lot of times when we issue debt, we get a premium. And basically what it means is they, the borrower of the debt or people who buy our debt give us back money to help us pay the interest cost. And the way we handle that, when that money comes back, is we amortize it over, you know, we amortize it over a certain period of time. The town's policy has been to amortize it over five years. So we would take, if we got two hundred thousand dollars in, I'm sorry, in premium, we would divide that by seven, and we would apply that portion, the one-seventh to each year for the first seven years of the debt. We've had a source of contention with this, with bond council and with our auditors. They don't, our bond council, I'm sorry, our auditors want us to amortize the debt over the life of the debt, which is fifteen years. Our bond council wants us to amortize the debt over three years. We've come up with a compromise where we're going to amortize it over five years. By doing that, it will actually reduce next year's debt service interest number by a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So applying the five-year amortization versus the seven-year amortization, you could reduce the debt service interest cost by a hundred and thirty thousand dollars next year.
Great, so we're twenty thousand dollars.
And maybe, Joe, on somewhere on the revenues, possibly?
Sure, on the revenue side, we, as, as I always tell you, we, we monitor revenues constantly, and we're, we finished up our forecast based on the, where we are mid-March, and we feel fairly confident that there could be an adjustment made on both the, well, if we go to that page in your book, let's go to the.
Orange tab, debt service? No?
The, the red summary page, summaries.
So debt is red?
I'm sorry, no, debt would be the, on your, on your tax and budget worksheet, that debt number is currently eight million, four hundred and two thousand, three forty-seven, and that could be reduced by a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Quick question, Joe? By you doing the five-year bond, I want you to do it differently, it does not create any issue for us going out the bond for the new school if it gets voted approved?
No, it shouldn't have any issue at all. And, and just, yeah, just, when I did the financial forecasts back in February, I actually factored in that we would get premium on each one of those bond issues, and I actually used the three, three-year amortization schedule. So I was actually more aggressive with that than, than what we're doing with this. So there should not be any issues at all.
Great, thank you.
So that would be the debt.
Excuse me, Joe? Just quickly, and that was with recommendation or bond council is, supports a five-year amortization, was that what?
Yeah, there's no, there's no, they're, they're, they recommend three years. Auditors recommend the life of the bonds, which our bonds are fifteen years. I compromised at seven, and now because bond council said, no, you really should be doing this at three years, I decided maybe we should move it to five years.
Right.
So there's no, there's no conflict or anything like that with it.
Excuse me, Joe? There's, are there additional costs, although I mean, reduce payments by making it five years?
No.
Okay.
Now, this is money that just comes off the top. Basically, you know, we, we have a debt schedule and you're paying X number of dollars for principal, X number of dollars for interest, and then the premium minus is off against that. So minus is off against interest, so you pay, your net is you pay less interest each year.
Excellent.
So, and, and this was something that just came up, actually, in the past week. As we were talking about the possibility of the, the debt issuance on, on the high school and how we were going to handle, because that would be, if we get premiums on those bond issues, those are going to be large numbers. We're talking, you know, the last bond issue, we got a two hundred thousand dollar premium. On a, you know, on a twenty million dollar bond issue, you're going to have, you're going to have a premium of five percent, so you're going to get several million, a couple of million dollars. We were talking about how that was going to be amortized, and, and that's when the three-year came up and the five-year came up, and, and so that's when I said, well, maybe we should be doing that to our existing debt. So that's that one. On the, on, on the next page, under main year's recommended budget, budget, general fund revenue. There's some three, two lines that I think could be adjusted for next year based on the performance we're getting this year, which I anticipate will carry forward into next year, and that's the delinquent tax number. If you look, on our projection for this year, that ends June 30th, we're looking at three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, which is considerably above what we budgeted. We had boosted it by thirty thousand for next year, and that number probably can go up another, another ten thousand, ten thousand dollars. And then the other one that I would look at or could recommend increasing is the interest in lien fees, and that probably can go up another ten thousand dollars also. As you, again, can see, we budgeted a hundred and fifty-eight, we're projecting almost two hundred and eighty-one thousand this year. So those are two where you could, you can make an adjustment going into next, for next year.
And with those two, that gets us to the bottom line of two point nine nine percent, is that correct?
It should get you to two point nine nine percent. If you give me a minute, I will approve that.
CJ?
Yes.
Well, Joe is doing that, and I'm not trying to rush you, but if you have something else, but one thing I was thinking what would be helpful is that if everyone in general kind of agrees with what we've just done today.
Yep.
We haven't done any motions for any of it, which we need to do. We've been keeping track, I could put the motions together and then give it to Peter. We have a, a template, but with all the different things we've done, and you could take them one at a time, I mean, unless you still want to make.
Let's see the numbers on the big screen.
Right, after that, but I'm just saying, yeah.
See if we're all in agreement on what we're talking about here, but that'd be great.
Okay, good.
The ball rolling.
Yep.
And remember, make it big enough for.
Excuse me, CJ, could I ask a quick question? Kathy, just, and I'm curious. I like what we're doing with the budget, we are obviously close to where we want to be, if not better, but I just have one quick question, which is, again, on the risk that we're willing to take on, on safety and security and also on technology. So my question is, if we wanted to put money into the knock boxes for the fire department and maybe some building stuff, would it be willing, would it be a good idea to get that, to take on a little more risk on the technology?
This number has the knock boxes in it.
Oh, it does have, oh, I thought it was.
He goes, going, he's got the knock box, and don't forget, from the Board of Ed, we kept them all their security, we didn't cut that at all.
Oh, okay.
And we didn't count that, we didn't cut any towns type of thing, so we didn't count the knock boxes, nope.
Oh, okay.
Nope.
Excellent, I just wondered.
Okay, yeah.
What were we possibly losing that we might be able to gain back in?
Yep.
By maybe just taking on a little more risk on the town side for technology infrastructure?
Yeah.
No, we're good.
But as long as we're good.
Joe, put those numbers up, you see the bottom line, then we'll go through all the changes we made, so.
Okay.
And that's what I was saying, CJ, why would do the motions, and then there'll be each individual one, so everyone's clear about what we've done.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah.
Or if you want to send that to Peter, some of the ones Kathy that we, where you all agreed on earlier.
Okay, I didn't add the three seven nine seven.
Are we on right now, by the way?
Well, Sam?
Thank you for our patience, for our viewing public. We're just working on our final numbers to present the spreadsheet on the screen for you. And I believe that's bottom line, tax increases, maybe coming at two million nine. Once we get those numbers up, so the town council all to look at and review, we will ask the town staff to go through the list of changes we made today for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two town budget. And from that point, we're hoping to make some motions and pass the town council's recommended town budget.
Okay, just to recap, the Board of Education with the seven hundred thousand dollar reduction would be at seventy-two million, two eighty-eight, nine thirty-four, or three point three percent increase. Town budget is unchanged. The debt service with the reduction of a hundred and thirty thousand would go to eight million, two seventy-two, three forty-seven. The capital budget with the truck back in and all the reductions that were listed would now be three million, one forty-seven, one sixty-six. No change to the Board of Ed defined contribution, contribution. So your bottom line budget now would be one hundred and sixteen million, one hundred thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars. In addition, the non-tax revenue would be added. I did take a liberty to get you to your two point nine nine as opposed to three, I added another five thousand dollars to delinquent taxes. So it's actually increased the revenue of twenty-five thousand dollars. So your non-tax property tax revenue would be one million, three hundred and sixteen thousand, an increase of twenty-five thousand dollars. So your overall non-tax revenue is nine million, six thirty-six, nine forty-seven. Gives you a mill rate of twenty-eight point eight one mils, point eight four, two point nine nine percent. It's a hundred and ninety dollars per household, average house.
What's that number again, please?
The, which one?
Per household? Just the per household.
Per households, one eighty-nine, a hundred and ninety, rounded, one eighty, one eighty-nine, seventy-nine, or a hundred and ninety dollars, two point nine nine percent.
All right, any questions on the spreadsheet right now before we go through the list of changes?
Did you have the numbers for the?
Thank you for getting those numbers there and helping us out with that, Joe.
Joe, could you just make it smaller again so we can see it?
We need to plug in the numbers.
We need to see more numbers.
And one note.
Oh, too small.
One note I'll make to the viewing public, when they're looking at the adjustments and increases, one number that stands out as a high number is that capital number, and just as reminded, as we could substantially cut back capital last year, and our commitment upon doing that was to recoup and try and get us back on track with our capital spending. So if you look at a high percentage there, that is a risk.
So what was the dollar amount we just cut debt by?
I'm sorry?
What was the dollar amount we cut debt by?
Debt.
Uh, one hundred and thirty thousand.
Even?
Even, yeah.
So CJ, what I thought is, once we're almost ready, we could start with the individual mo, I'll, I'll kind of make the motion so you have the numbers, and then Peter, Ken, you guys can.
Peter will make the official motion, you'll give us the actual numbers that we.
Yeah, and then, and Peter.
Justin will make the emotion, then we will vote and or discuss on the others.
Yes, all right. And so just, we're going to start at the beginning of it, once, one minute, and it will be the Board of Education budget, and again, we're working off our tax and budget worksheet.
And Kathy, can we get an updated worksheet?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Yep. I may have to copy it upstairs.
Yeah, that's fine.
Actually, would you like, would I copy this? I could shoot a copy of this.
Uh, yeah, that's, I mean, yeah, sure. Thank you.
May Paulie have your keys?
Is that just going to be rolled out?
We'll find out.
So it'd be to reduce the education.
Yeah, bring her that one. Yeah, I hear that one.
Why? Reduce the town's account by nothing, so we're not taking any action on that.
Yep.
And then reduce the debt by whatever his number was.
This is clearly not the glory part, the exciting part, for all of you at home to watch, or us here, but we have to do the process and make sure we have all these numbers proper before we make our most-
There's no number. But I need a total at the end.
That's going to be one final.
No, not on the final, when we're doing it.
For a total, is what you want?
Yeah. For each individual one, we're not going to deal with this now, let's deal with individual ones.
She wants to reduce by seven for a total budget of-
So we know what it is.
So combining those.
Yeah.
All right, this is not, I know, okay.
That's the board, then the next one is-
Hold on.
Anna, could you mute us?
No.
Peter's going to do that one.
Okay, please.
We're all looking forward to next year's budget season, so we can actually have the public in front of the council at that point in time, whether we're sitting behind the table or where the ones-
I don't know, I kind of like my new seat.
Thank you, Joe.
And you'll have to be elected. To those of you who didn't catch on, the town manager enjoys looking down upon the council.
Yeah.
Put her seat higher.
I'm just going to get tall stools down here.
Oh, no.
Do you want the numbers again? For total?
No, I don't have a feeder, I got to be there. Okay.
Oh, I'm not going to, no, I'm not going to do that this year. No, I have a-
Gary, just, you know, give a gratuitous plug, can people drop off pasta and sauce for dinner though?
Yes, yes, we're open all through the week.
The number at the end is right there, so it's just really just reducing by X for a new number of this, reduce by that for a new number of this.
Yeah, and the capital I have all, this is the hard one, it's all done.
Kind of like make it yourself pasta stuff for this year?
Well, we couldn't really fund raisers this year, so-
Seven hundred and thirty.
Help the pantry one way or another, so we're doing it through the pantry.
Certainly have been a number of different needs this year that have fascinated us.
Sure.
Yep. Do we have the other two D? Do we have the other two? Which is other?
Yep. Do we need to accept the proposed town account? No changes to the D if we accept the other one?
I don't think so, because I think you can do it here.
It's going to be in that one.
Okay.
I think so.
To the town manager.
All right, so just stand behind me, and we'll do it one at a time. Start with education first. So where's the education?
Operating?
Yeah, okay. So if we look at our tax and budget worksheet that you have in front of you, what we're going to do is we're going to do them individually, and then make sure we're all on the same page, we're going to take motions of it, and then we're going to do a final motion, which I'm going to give Peter, we're working on that one, and then you'll do that one, okay? So the first one is on the education, and my understanding is, is you're to reduce the proposed Board of Education fiscal year 21-22 operating budget by $700,000 for a total expenditure of $72,288,934.
Okay, I make a motion to-
Peter, why don't you just say as the manager?
Oh, that's what I was going to do, I was trying to put it. I make a motion to accept the town manager's motion for the Board of Education.
She can make a motion, but that's okay.
That's good.
Yes. I make a motion- She's already doing it.
Okay, we have a motion, we'll call that a motion.
Second.
Yep, motion in second. Kathy, any further questions in common? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
For Joe and Paula, just for clarity, we did not make any changes on the town side, so do we not say anything about that right now?
No.
No, in the final motion, yeah. That's just what I wanted to make sure, okay. The next one is going to be debt. To reduce the proposed debt budget by $130,000 for a total of $8,272,347.
I make a motion to accept what was read by the town manager. Joe Capitafaro, second.
We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
The next one is capital improvements, and I'm going to do the board side first, and I'm going to read them all off, and we'll go for, we'll take them individually from the board and then the town council. So it would be to reduce the proposed capital improvement on the Board of Education, the MEP account by $250,000, the technology account by $150,000, the classroom furniture account by $185,000, the vehicle replacement account by $95,000, the FHS mascot account by $5,000, the telephone system account by $25,000, for a total reduction of the Board of Education capital of $710,000.
I make a motion to accept what was read by the town manager for the Board of Ed's capital budget. Joe Capitafaro, second.
Motion in second.
Just one comment, I mean, are we, should we clarify that, are these ultimately subject to Board of Education approval?
They're not.
They're not.
Okay, I just want to make sure, yeah, I just want to make sure.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
The next one is on the town side, so it would be to reduce the proposed town's capital by the irrigation improvement, irrigation improvement account by $40,000, the fire communication account by $50,000, the fire station renovation by $25,000, the town manager technology account by $25,000, the youth center account by $25,000, the stone house renovation by $150,000, the town hall improvement account by $25,000, and the land records re-indexing account by $30,000 for a total reduction of $370,000.
I make a motion to accept what the town manager has read for the town side of the budget for the capital budget. Joe Capitafaro, second.
And motion in second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
And then just, why don't we do this for, just to wrap the capital up, to set the proposed capital improvement plan for fiscal year 21-22 at $3,147,166 for an increase of $1,455, and one hu, no, $1,455,183, or a 86 percent over the current year budget.
I make a motion to accept what the town manager has read for the total of the capital improvement budget. Joe Capitafaro, second.
Motion in second. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Okay, I think the next one is, I skipped it, I'm sorry. Did I do debt? Yeah, we did debt, okay, I'm sorry. So then the next one is the revenues.
You have to do a revenue one.
Yeah, the revenues. Okay.
One minute, please. Joe, grim up a little bit. And then do it. Final one's filled in. I think I got it.
All right, we're going right into this right now, right?
The first one would be to increase the delinquent tax revenues by $15,000.
I make a motion to accept what the town manager has read on the town revenue side. Second?
Motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passing unanimously.
The last one would be to increase the delinquent interest by $10,000.
I make a motion to accept what the town manager has read to the delinquent account. Joe Capitafaro, second.
Was that 15?
That was 15, to increase the delinquent interest by $10,000.
Oh, $10,000?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Motion's been made in second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
So that's all your individual motions, so now this would be the last motion, it would be the total motion altogether. And I gave it to Peter.
I make a motion to set the Farmington fiscal year 2021-2022 budget for the Board of Education at $72,288,934 for a 3.3 percent budget increase above fiscal year 2020-2021, and the town budget at $32,317,083 for a 2.99 percent increase above fiscal year 2020-2021, and debt service at $8,272,347 for a 6.39 percent decrease over fiscal year 2020-2021, and the capital improvement budget at $3147,166 for a 86 percent increase above the fiscal year 2020-2021 budget, and the BOE defined contribution at $75,000 for a 50 percent increase above fiscal year 2020-2021, resulting in a total expenditure of $116,105,300 or a 3.72 percent increase over the fiscal year 2020-2021 budget. Joe Capitafaro, second.
We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Congratulations.
And that is a budget, ladies and gentlemen. We have a budget with our tax increase, we'd be looking at 2.99 percent. This is a budget that I think we worked very hard on getting us to this place. It's done a great job in replacing the capital that was reduced last year to have, to no tax increase for the public. So we're hopeful that the town will get a chance to look through this and be very comfortable with this budget.
We have one other item to talk about is the warning, and I think Joe has that.
Do they take a motion on it? Do we make a motion on it, right?
Yeah, do they take a motion to approve the warning?
Ready to see?
Item E.
You ready?
Yep.
I make a motion, agenda item E, to approve the warning of April 19th, 2021, annual town meeting and the April 29th, 2021 referendum. Joe Capitafaro, second.
We have a motion in second.
And so you, everyone understands, so on the referendum now, we understand we have the three bond questions, the roads, the, Joe, the Noah Wallace School roof replacement and the IAR cafeteria. So those would be the three bond questions, and then we're approving an annual town meeting, which we're hoping to have live at the high school, and then the referendum with the three-
The town meeting is to be determined how we go about pulling that.
Still to be determined, but, yes.
Okay, we have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Before we go to item F, do we have any executive session?
No executive session.
None? Okay. I will leave you with a quote from George W. Bush. "It's clearly a budget, it has lots of numbers."
Excellent.
And CJ, just as a wonderful quote, you all understood that the next, that this was now the town managers, now at the next meeting, April 3rd, you'll do the, this now becomes your budget, it's the town council's budget, so we'll have another public hearing on it at that time.
Yes.
Just for the public, okay. Congratulations.
On that note, I make an adjournment to adjourn the March 13th, 2021 Farmington Town Council meeting. Second.
We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.